Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's meeting of Tuesday, October 23rd. My name is Jim Leehan. To my left is Mr. Scott Bugby. To his left is Mr. Jack Hathaway, Town Administrator, and to his left Marion Harrington, our Executive Assistant. To my right, Mr. Scott Bragdon, our Human Resource Director. Mr. Garrity had an unavoidable conflict this evening that we knew about in advance. Just to tell all the folks at home so that you won't stay up too late, this will be a brief meeting tonight. It is our practice when one member cannot attend the meeting that we try to postpone as many issues that we really need to discuss in depth where there are only three of us. We think that it's in the best interest of the community for all three of us to hear these issues and think them through as best we can. So, the agenda has changed a little bit. The Fire Chief was going to join us earlier. We're going to move him back to the next meeting when Mr. Garrity can be with us. He did have an unavoidable conflict. So, we have pushed off a number of things. We would have actually canceled this evening's meeting, but we did have one item that did require that we meet, so we need to ratify that contract. But we'll have a few other discussion items this evening as well. So, sorry for the lengthy walk-in. Oh, and I need to remind everyone that this meeting is being audio and videotaped.
Well played.
You were about to tell me that, weren't you?
I knew you'd get to it.
Well, I probably have somewhat distorted your reading of the agenda this evening, but would you like to do that, Mr. Hathaway?
Happy to. Meeting Tuesday, October 23rd, 2012, of the Norfolk Board of Selectmen. First order of business, as Chairman Leehan said, we will postpone the meeting with Chief Cole Bushnell. But we will meet. We do need to, Town Minister report, ratify the police contract. We have Mr. Bragdon here to talk about the negotiations. We also have a discussion on the fall town meeting warrants, review of capital items, discussion of the budget for 82 Main Street by the Affordable Housing Trust, and a discussion of potential town planner, and acceptance of minutes.
Thank you very much, Jack. Well, Scott, we have completed the negotiations with the police, so why don't you highlight what we've done and review the contract?
Great. So, I just want to take a couple of minutes and give a brief overview of the Patrolman Association's agreement, which is going to be signed momentarily, has been assigned already by the, by the union members. Just to mention that Jim Leehan and, and Jack and myself were the, were on the negotiating committee, and Chuck came in as a material expert when we needed him. He was a big help when needed. But it's been completed. I would say that it was a true negotiation. There was give-ups and pluses on both sides of the, of the aisle, and I think we've got a good contract with, on place. So, it is a four-year agreement. One of the things that we've done this year is that, you know, this year, all of our contracts came up at the same time. So, we've kind of varied that. So, the firefighters and the police are four-year agreements. The DPW, which we've completed, and the Clerical Union are three-year agreements. So, in the next time around, we'll have two in two different years. So, that will help us out a little bit.
Give us something to do every year.
Yeah, and help us planning. So, you know, we did negotiate salary increases. The first year for the police is, is two and a half percent. And then there were a number of other changes that, that we made in the contract. Uh-oh, bad me.
Thank you for, you reminded me. Thank you very much.
Yeah, there you go. We-
You too.
I usually do that, too.
We have, we, we made a, about a hundred dollar increase in the clothing and cleaning equipment allowances. Those costs have gone up significantly. It was well-needed. We did change some of the wording around how the overtime works in the contract in a couple of different ways. Clarified the overtime after 40 hours, which is right and fair, and also how it works as it comes to them being called back. We also negotiated a, I call it a resting period. I don't know what the, what you might want to call it, but a period after a person's been out sick before they would start taking additional overtime and, and so that they have time to recover, so that you're not getting someone who's been out ill and then coming back and working 18-hour shifts. But that was negotiated, so that's a helpful thing. We, there were a lot of wording in the contract that, I think we've, we agreed that shouldn't have been there. For instance, there was a lot of wording that referred to the retired firefighters, excuse me, fire, patrolmen, and what, how they were handled as far as, you know, coming back and overtime and, and other stuff. And they're not union members. They're retired. So, that shouldn't be in the contract, and we removed it. We also removed any wording for the special police officers that was in there and how they called people in an emergency situations in overtime because they're not in the union. Shouldn't be in the contract. We clarified in the contract how detailed pay was to be paid. For instance, if it, there's a more consistent notice period if it gets canceled, and also if the police officer isn't able to complete the, the assignment, they'll get paid the hours that they work, essentially. So, that's a, that's a good thing. There was a whole section in the contract about student officers. Again, student officers are not union members yet, so that shouldn't have been in there, in our opinion. So, we did, we did take that out of the contract, which is good. We updated the mileage allowances. There's been a lot of increases in gas, et cetera, over the last few years, so we made that fair. It's not a significant cost in that usually the police officers will take the patrol car when they, when they travel to the courts, et cetera, but we did make that more fair. And one of the more significant and very complicated issue had to do with the Quinn bill. As, as you may, may know, the state decided over the past few years not to fund their half of the Quinn bill expense.
You might take a second just to tell folks at home what the Quinn bill is, because most, most people, I'm sure, don't know.
Sure. Yeah. The Quinn bill is an incentive program, and it's for police officers to get educated, to get further degrees. So, there is a, I don't remember the percentages off the top of my head, but it's like 10% if you get an associate's degree, and 15 if you have a bachelor, and 20 or 25 if you have-
You're close. Close enough.
Yeah, if, if you have a master's degree. So, this is an incentive so that the towns get, you know, better educated police officers on their force, et cetera, and it's, and it's worked well. And some years ago, the town, a town meeting ratified this, so we do pay this. But however, the, the state was on, on hook for half of that, and as you can hear by those percentages, it's a significant amount of money for those officers that have advanced degrees. There was some court cases in the past year that essentially said that because the state isn't paying their half, that the towns don't necessarily, depending on the wording in their contract, have to pay their half, the, the state's half, so that it still would be on the board, on, on for their, the town's half of the payment. Well, that's not how we view this. We, as a town, view this as continuing to be an important thing. We have funded in the past, and this agreement does continue to fund the Quinn bill at, at 100%. What was proposed by the union was to come up with essentially the Norfolk Plan, which was concerning because we don't know what's going to happen to this plan in the future. We've guaranteed these payments for the four years of the contract. We'll see what happens in four years, what the future of that bill is in, in four years. Have they changed it? But we don't want to be in a position where we've guaranteed the, whatever plan you want to call it, the Norfolk Plan, and then they come up with the Jim Leehan Plan, and now we've got two. So, we thought this was prudent. We believe, Jim, you know, said multiple times how strongly he believed that this, this program is important to the town, and we have a lot of people that take, take part in it. So, we have guaranteed these payments in the, in this contract, and we'll see what happens in four years when that, that contract is up.
If I, may I?
Absolutely.
The state started reducing its payments, I think, four years ago, Jack?
Yep.
And, and now hasn't made any payments in the last few years, and we have continued to honor the agreement, paying both our portion and the state portion to our officers. But it's only for those that were on existing staff.
That's correct.
We were not obligated to pay for any new hires that came under that. So, there were a number of issues around the Quinn bill, and Scott is correct. I, I think that it's a very good thing to provide financial incentives for officers to continue their education. We benefit from that. The town benefits from that. They personally benefit from that. Very similar to what's in the educational contracts. So, I'm very supportive of that, but we can't obligate the town to the unknown beyond this contract because we really have no idea what the Quinn bill's going to do. And, and I fully understand why they felt so strongly that they wanted it in there, but we were able to find common ground.
Yeah. Good. Ended up well. And so, those are the major changes that, that are in there. Again, the agreement's being signed tonight. I do also want to thank the patrolmen that participated in the, in the, in the negotiations. I think there were very good discussions. They did a great job at listening, and I do appreciate their, their efforts on behalf of their members.
They were Bobby Shannon, Kevin Roach, and Dave Holt, for those at home that may or may not know them.
Yep, and I, I do appreciate that. So, if there's no other questions or comments on that, I, I do want to just talk briefly about the DPW contract. The contract, it has been ratified by the union. We're in, we're dealing with technology issues at the moment, and that we didn't have a, we couldn't get a, a soft copy of the old agreement, and so we had to recreate it, and so we're, we're doing that. You'll have it at your next meeting to sign. The draft is, is, as of today, out to the union to, to take a final look at. Jack's got it, and Bob's. So, it's, it's really done at this point, but except for the signatures. And as I said, the union has ratified it. Their members have ratified it. Similar to the police contract, it was, it was a good negotiation. Jack attended some, some of the meetings, but Bob and I did, Bob McGee and I did do a lot of it. Just a few of the changes. We did change the, they receive, they, in their contracts, they receive a cost of living based on a, a government statistic, and the one that was being used was a monthly statistic for the specific month. Didn't make a lot of sense. So, we did make, make it to a, an annualized number, which is, again, it's, it's online. It's a government standard that we look up every year. They had a very complicated, they do, do get a performance reviews, their form, and the process was very complicated, unnecessarily so. So, I rewrote the, the form, made it much simpler, much fewer ratings, and so that will be part of the contract. Like our other departments, these are individuals that go through a tremendous amount of clothes in the, in their, in their work, and they weren't, weren't getting any kind of a clothing allowance. You know, they go through multiple pair of work boots every year, shirts, pants, they get ruined. We do provide, you know, uniforms to the guys who work on the trucks, but, because they get greasy every day. But, so we have agreed, not starting this year, but starting next year, to provide it. We're going to, we've sort of said in the contract that we'll negotiate that over the, over the coming year, but we'll be providing them some funds to buy T-shirts and other things that they'll, that they'll, that they, that they need. We have a new structure there where we have superintendents. There's three superintendents that work for Bob McGee, and a year, a year and a half ago, they were specifically voted into the contract. Well, from a management point of view, that was an issue for us. So, we, some of it, we did an aside agreement, but we ratified that to take that out of the contract. So, the three management superintendents are, are not union members. Only one of them was on board. The current ones, well, there were two, one of them left, but they were part of our negotiating, so they, they participate in that. But they are, are not part of this union bargaining agreement, so we have a true management team there. That did cause some other things, like there are times they have to jump on a piece of equipment, either for safety, or a car's got to get by, or for training purposes. So, we did add wording into the contract about when and how they can, they can use any of the, the, the equipment, and I think it's, it's quite fair. We did add, there are some doctors that refuse to do DOT physicals that are required every two years. So, the guys were, some of them had to pay for it out of their own pocket. I don't think that's fair for a physical that we require. So, for those, very few people whose doctors wouldn't do it, we have a doctor that we'll use. And again, it's every other year that's required, and we'll, 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 we'll help them pay for that. We did add a section into the contract, which is a management tool to look at any potential abuse of sick, sick time. So, you know, I'm going to the details, but essentially, if you're, are taking a lot of weekends, days after holidays, or are viewed as more than seven, you know, sort of individual days in a, in a calendar year, it's time for us to sit down, have a conversation about what's going on, and, and there is some specific wording about how, how we would deal with that. So, that's new, and I think that will really help Bob. And, I mean, we've got a lot of hard-working guys, so I don't want to say that there's a lot of abuse there. That's not, not, not the case. But we, it is a management tool for us to, to control any potential issues. We did add, from year '25, seniority year '25, 15 to 20, rather, we did add one day a week, a year for vacation. It's only one individual, so it's not a cost, but it does add a little bit of benefit and hopefully incentive for these individuals to stay with us as they, as they get more and more seniority. And, let's see. We negotiated a little bit around how the standby employees would work on Saturdays for the, for the Solid Waste Division, but there wasn't a significant change there. So, those are the, the biggest changes that went on there. Again, I think it's a good contract. There was give and take on both sides. We've got some good management tools in there, I think, to help us out, and you guys will have that over the coming week to read and at the next meeting to ratify.
Great. I would like to thank you too, Scott.
No problem.
I've had the pleasure of working with you now on two negotiations, Fire and Police, and your expertise and knowledge in the HR area helped us clean up a lot of the language in the contract that we might not have had the foresight to see. So, you've been a great help to us. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, as I do with the police, I do want to thank the negotiating committee from the union. They really were terrific to work with and had good ideas, and we really had some, some, I think, terrific sessions with them.
We're very fortunate. We have, I mean, negotiations is always a give and take, but we do have mutual trust with all of our unions, so they're, they're-
Yes. We are very, very fortunate.
We may disagree, but it's never adversarial. So, Scott, you have any-
No, no questions.
I would ask for a vote to ratify the police contract, so I would like a motion if you are willing to do so.
Sure. I move that we ratify the police contract.
I will second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hathaway, I don't mean to neglect your contributions to it as well.
Appreciate that, but Scott, it was a great team effort. Thank you for your help on, you know, especially on the police contract. You, that was a, a healthy negotiation.
How long did it take?
Took a while.
Took a while.
I mean, what's that, what's a while? I mean, I don't want you to start. How long?
It's usually- Three months.
Okay.
Three months or so, yeah. Very productive.
The Quinn bill is a tricky thing, and, and, I mean, it's tricky, and it's-
I think we're pretty fair. I mean, it's pretty generous to pick it up.
It's hard. It's, it's an odd situation when you sort of philosophically agree with the union's point, but you can't put the town into an obligation when there's an unforeseen issue that we just don't know how the legislature's going to react. And, so it's tricky.
It'd almost be easier if the legislature just wiped it all out and let us-
I wish they would. If they'd just, just get rid of it, if that'd be their pleasure, and then we can deal with it locally. But the unknown is tough to deal with any time in contracts. Okay. Can we, Jack, is it, can we get to the capital?
We can. Yeah, why don't we talk a little bit about that? I know, Jim, you were at the non-capital meeting. It was a capital meeting, but then they ended in a forum, so it was a-
Is this for me or Jim? For both?
That's, one for, one for each of you.
I think I printed that. Here you go.
Yeah, maybe some stuff you've seen before.
As a lead into this, we have been talking with the, the Capital Outlay Committee is now fully engaged. I think their meeting is Thursday night. We have capital requests that are in excess of a million dollars. We've, I'm going to ask the board tonight to agree to allocate some additional to the free cash, but we have $225,000 of prison mitigation money. And Scott, you and I can figure out, I, I would recommend another 75,000 to give them. 300,000 is an objective. But Jack and I have been working on some of the major items, basically the vehicles, and looking at possibly how we might finance this as opposed to having it work out of the capital outlay. And we've been, I asked Jack to take a look at, at the debt. This is the non-override debt, if you will. This is what we pay out of the operating budget. And we have some substantial debt coming off the books in the very near future. And we could absorb a little bit back and, and still be comfortable in terms of our operational budget, and make a dent in some of these major capital items. We've got well over $400,000 worth of requests for vehicles, and we don't have $400,000 to spend. But if we were to finance, and we can finance this over five years, and rates now are under 3%, we could make a, a good dent in this and absorb the cost out of the reduction that's taking place over the next few years in the operations, in the debt budget as it now stands. So, that, is that as a leeway? Jack, you've done some work on it.
I have. So, you've got a couple of things in front of you. One, I guess, is just the cover sheet, and that's just kind of talks about what Jim just mentioned. You know, if we take the $225,000 of prison mitigation and take 75, just, you know, I have a sheet here, just under 75,000 to, to come up with a round number of $300,000 that the Capital Committee could use towards some of our capital requests. I think that would be a productive number to have, to give to them, to allow them to start looking at our, our capital requests, which they're going to start doing this Thursday. In addition to that, and we'll get into, we'll go back to this in a second, talking about trying to spend $260,000 of borrowed money on vehicles. And if you go to this big sheet here-
I'm going to use my old copy, the one we did on our worksheet.
Well, I'm thinking the big, this one, the big, technically physically large sheet.
That one. The criggled one.
This shows us our non-exempt debt, and it starts from 2013 and goes out to 2023. And you can see, it's, it's giving you how much we're going to have to pay in, in principal and interest over the next, well, 11 years. And it starts off at 562,000, and you can see it working its way down to just over $70,000 in the last year. So, down at the bottom, I've put together, I have a formula to try and figure out if we try and maintain a level, a level debt service, so a level budget for principal and interest of $560,000. So, that's where I have goal written.
Yeah.
If I try and maintain that, how much capacity would we have each year? And if, you know, so if we borrow, if we borrowed this year, we'd, we'd have some capacity next year when we have to start making payments. So, so there's a little bit of a one-year lag going on here. So, we would have, you can see in 2000, borrowing $260,000 in the first year, and then, you know, potential, you know, and then, and then, I'm not saying we have the need, but we have the capacity then trying to meet this goal of borrowing 410 the next year, 380 the next year, 290 the next year, and trying to maintain that $560,000 level of, of debt service. So, I figured out, you know, what the, what the principal payments would be, what the interest payments would be, and it's just giving us somewhat of a, of a framework to work within. Obviously, we've got to take into account if there are other things that come up that are, that we're not paying for out of cash, but we're going to borrow for. We'd obviously want to put them into the schedule, too. So, this may not just be vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is just an illustration of what the capacity would be. And keep in mind, as you, as you look through this, we're forecasting out 10 years, and interest rates aren't going to be quite what they are today in the next 10 years.
No.
I think that's highly unlikely, and we're forecasting it at 3%. So, it, it's a little bit distorted in terms of capacity. But what we were looking to do, Scott, short-term on this was to, if you look at your capital sheet-
Yes.
We, we were looking at the first three vehicles that you see there, which are critical for DPW. And I wish Mr. Garrity were here, because I think he'd really like this one. We were looking at a Ford Focus, Tasers, and two police vehicles.
I have it as three. Did it change?
Roughly, and, and a Focus is about 12 grand. So, roughly, that would have been about $210,000 worth of debt.
Okay.
Here.
No, I haven't seen one. I thought Jackie sent it to me, right?
Just where the check marks are.
Right, okay.
So, that would be about $210,000 in debt, which we could absorb over five years and still have the debt reducing at a fairly substantial amount. We've got some huge drops in 2015, 2016, and 2017 in terms of our debt. And I'm not advocating that we, you know, keep a level debt for the next 10 years. That's not my point. But, but we have a critical need on vehicles, and we've kind of got a one-time opportunity here to make a dent at it and not have to ask for an override to do it. And that's, and I think Jack and I, at least, in our first look at this, are pretty comfortable that we can handle this in the budget without a whole lot of problem. You agree, Mr. Hathaway?
Yep, I do. I think, you know, Scott was already commenting. I think, you know, Chuck is still going to, would like to come make a pitch to us for talking about three vehicles, but other than that, I think-
He's more than welcome.
... our plan is a-
I don't know how he's going to fit into that Focus, but we'll give it a try.
We'll stretch, we'll, we'll squeeze him in.
We'll just have a backseat, no front seat.
So, he's changing from three vehicles, three vehicles and a Focus, so four total?
No, no, no. The Focus wouldn't be for him.
No, the Focus is not for him. We're kidding, we're kidding about that.
All right. I'm just looking at what I have here. Okay.
No, we have, we have a, a need for the assessor's office, a few other, I mean, they've had hand-me-down vehicles forever. I think at one time, we actually had one that had floorboards falling out of it. They're basically all squad cars. And, so our thought was, is that if we stopped trying to recycle these and brought in a very economical, and Ford Focus was an arbitrary choice-
Something like that, something over $10,000.
-that it would substantially, one, be far less expensive. It cost us roughly $3,000 to $5,000 a year just to keep these old cars on the road.
Yeah.
So, you know, in two years, you've paid for the darn thing. And it just, it doesn't make sense to keep doing it the way we're doing it. So, we're, we're trying to make some changes while we have an opportunity.
Now, one thing that, down at the-
So, if you're in agreement, sort of philosophically, and you don't have to say so now, but by the time we're done, Jack would take this to the Capital Outlay Committee on-
Yeah, no, I, I think it makes sense. We have the-
-to share with them that they can take some of these major items off of the list.
Off, right. Giving them low-interest, but now's the time to do it, forever going to do it.
And we'll, we'll go forward with a request to fund it through debt.
Now, one thing that, had been some discussions with, between Chief Stone and Bob Bullock today, is just talking about the Public Safety Building and what to do. You know, obviously, Chuck's got some concerns about keeping the building going, but I think what, if you go to the second page of the requests, Bob's got those laid out there for you. What he was, what he, this was kind of his input before, kind of listening to the chief, and not that it's changed dramatically, but, you know, Chuck's talking about, well, tweaking this a little bit and, and doing some upgrades to the HVAC system, a little bit differently than what Bob is talking about originally. So, on this plan, we're talking about heating and cooling units in the, in the office units, and then also upgrading the heating system to gas. So, that's, you know, taking out the old boilers, something that the Public Safety Building Committee has, you know, talked about a little bit. But now that we have gas in front of the, the building, you know, we could take those out, put in some efficient gas burners. We'd have to re-pour the floor, apparently, but, but one thing Bob wants to do with an HVAC expert is look at, you know, does it make sense to put these, replace these units that aren't working in, you know, some of the offices, and, or do we connect them to the boiler system, you know, and take advantage of the new furnace, the new furnaces? So, Bob's going to, you know, work with some HVAC people, mechanical engineer, if necessary, and I think he's going to- And I think he's going to ask for a request to do a, put together a plan for that, rather than ask for all these things now.
Okay. I mean, I was going to suggest that we set up, you know, we.
I know exactly what you're thinking.
Yeah, I know. It's a rock and a hard spot.
It's like good money after bad.
It is. It is good money after bad. And, you know, at some point, as uncomfortable as it is to, you know, ask the public to look at a new facility, we're at the point where we don't have a lot of choice. So we're either going to have to make some major financial investments in a building that really isn't suited for it over the long term, or we're going to have to see if we can't get folks to understand the critical nature of the need down there.
Just off the top, this is 95K, right?
To throw a couple of hundred thousand dollars at a building. Now, if you could, you know, if the conversation could convince us that we could buy 10 years of serviceable use, that's a different issue. But I don't think that's going to be the case.
You know, there's a lot, still a lot of discussions. Today, I went to a, this is only going to cloud the conversation even more, but today, I went to a town administrative meeting, and, you know, it was hosted by Norfolk County, their administration. And they wanted to talk to all the administrators about what, what do we want to see in regionalization? And the thing I brought up was talking about lockups. I mean, it's just, you know, it's, we're going to have a problem next year when we regionalize dispatch, because right now, our dispatchers.
They see, they watch over the cells.
They watch the prisoners. And that's got to change, regardless of going regional, that's going to change, because there's, there's some new requirements of the dispatchers. When they get a certain type of call, they go into this EMD mode, emergency medical dispatch mode, where they have to stay on the call with the person that they're on until an officer gets to the site. So they literally can't, they can't put the person on hold, they can't do anything. So they can't leave and go see the dispatch, you know, they can't, if the prisoner's having a problem, they can't leave that person. So they're, they're, now they've got two jobs where they've got to dedicate 100% of their attention, which obviously is physically impossible. So that has to change anyway. Having said that, our dispatchers will be leaving the building sometime next year and being in Rantham. So we'll have lockup here, so we'll need to staff it with officers here.
But the vision for lockup here is, is a temporary lockup situation, because Rantham has, what, 20 some odd cells?
I don't think it's, they have more. I don't think it's 20. I mean, I think they have 10 or so.
But the intent was to have longer-term lockup in Rantham. At least, I know that was part of the original discussion.
It's been, it's definitely part of the discussion, something there, you know, at the chiefs, the chiefs have had those discussions, and Chief Anderson from Rantham is, is on board with that. You know, we may have to put an officer over there. You know, we bring a prisoner over there, we may have to leave an officer over there to watch. So we may not need the cells here, but we still need.
The officers.
The officer there. You know, hopefully, they've got somebody locked up too, so maybe we're, we're doing some cost sharing. There's.
Well, the 11 and a half million dollar question is, is, you know, do we have a legitimate chance of pursuing regionalization of police and fire?
I believe we do, absolutely. You know, and that, that was part of the discussion today, too. Town administration certainly don't, and I've had these discussions with the chiefs. I don't, none of us are saying, no, it's not, it's not impossible.
Are any other boards of selectmen against it? I mean, we're, Scott, I know you are part of that original vote, but I, the prior board, anyway, was, was fully supportive of that, so.
No, I don't think, I haven't heard of any other boards, you know, when we're, especially when we're talking with the King Philip District and Franklin, none of them have voiced in opposition to it.
Plainfield's still talking to North Attleboro, right?
Plainfield's still talking to North Attleboro.
Which makes sense. I mean, they don't, they don't boundary Norfolk, and it makes sense.
And anytime we've gotten anywhere close to the finish line with one of these projects, there has been a, somebody's pulled, you know, somebody's gotten cold feet and pulled out. So it's, so I can't tell you that it's a done deal until.
Well, we've broken the barrier. We've got dispatch.
Yeah, I think dispatch is.
Broken through the line, yeah.
So anyway, so our discussion, so I brought up, you know, with the county, why wouldn't the county do dispatch and just solve, I mean, lockup and solve this problem for all of the, you know, Norfolk County towns? So they're going to look at that.
Good.
I think that would make a ton of sense. I talked to Franklin again today. They're, they're more than interested in doing a regional lockup if something doesn't work out with Rantham. And in fact, Foxborough was there as well. They're having discussions with the Kraft Group, because they've got, they've got some lockup in, in, obviously, at Gillette, but not enough. So they've got to expand their, they've got to expand their lockup.
Fifty thousand people in that joint.
Country Fest is the dig, going 300 people.
Yeah, Chuck was telling me about how they have temporary fence put up, and they put 100 of them into each bin, and it's entertaining. But anyway, they've got to increase their lockup there. But obviously, they're not going to use that Monday through Saturday or Monday through Friday at 4:00. So there may be potential there that, Foxborough's already had that discussion with them, that they may be able to use Gillette as a regional lockup. So there's, there are some solutions coming up.
Are we just trying to, because we don't have space, Jack? Or I know it's the people, you know, the dispatchers can't watch them. I don't understand, do we have not enough cells?
We have three cells.
We have enough, we have enough cells for what we do now. The problem that, the reason this is all coming up as a discussion is to replace the station, it, cells are very expensive. So if we can get rid of that, we, and maybe we can build a cheaper station. And then also, what are we going to do when we go to regional dispatch?
Right, because they're not there. I get that part.
Certainly don't want to send our dispatchers to Rantham and then have to hire somebody else here to watch a prisoner. So that's.
But we only have three cells anyways. Is that right?
Three adult and one juvenile. Two male, one female, and one juvenile. And they're in horrible condition. So I don't recommend spending.
Don't want to spend the night.
Spend any time.
That's not my, you know, again, if they have to spend the night, I don't have a problem with that. It's their fault.
Let's go back to the capital. I would, I don't want to take a vote on allocating the 75,000, because we haven't got that check in the bank yet from, but I think if we could, Scott, if you're concurring with this recommendation, I think you could take that recommendation to them. They could work with the concept of 300,000 being their budget. And, you know, I'm just a little gun shy. We came within two weeks of having that check deposited one year, and it bounced.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I.
Because you're concerned about the prison mitigation check?
225, right.
Okay, yeah. I thought you meant, because.
No, I'm not concerned about the 75.
Right, I was going to say, you don't want to.
75 in the bank.
Yeah, that one's in the bank.
Okay, you don't want to have to cover that in case we don't get the 225. I get you. That's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the, you know, adding free cash there to round up to 300.
That's great. I mean, that's, that's perfect, because that's all I was really, I just wanted to make sure everybody was thinking of the same thing and.
And are you comfortable with our pursuing?
Borrowing for vehicles, yeah. Things like that, yeah. If Jack, you know, if it doesn't impact our budget, and we have, based on this, it doesn't, so.
Well, it will impact.
But I mean, we have, and we're not.
It's a pure cost, but it, it's a cost that's offset by a reduction, so. And we'll defer payment, we'll pay interest only, we'll defer payment until 2015. So you could see we have a big drop in 2015.
I did give you.
Yeah, what was that?
Smaller sheet.
You did.
I gave you the same information again, but then I also gave you the exempt debt. Sorry, I'm looking at out-years.
I only have that one, is out-years, right? That's the only one they gave us, right?
Yeah.
It's this one here, Scott.
Yeah, I got that too, but that's not a Jack one. Jack, that's out-years. It doesn't have the beginning years.
This is the exempt.
Oh, you have the early one. I don't have that, right?
This is, this is the part that's in the operating budget.
Right.
This is the part that's over and above, this part of the override. So this is on top of the levy.
That's all right. I get, I get the point. It's going up. Looks like from 600 to 1.6.
Right, going up. And then it's, but there is some coming off, right?
It's 2014.
Freeman Centennial's coming off.
Right.
Okay.
All right. And then my, so I will go have fun with the Capital Outlay Committee on Thursday.
So we have agreement. We're going to pull some vehicles off. We're going to look at financing those. And we're going to tell the Capital Outlay Committee they have a $300,000 consideration pending the check being deposited.
Yeah, that, you know, the check won't be deposited after town meeting, so.
Right, I know. Yeah, second week in December is usually when it comes in. But we can condition the motion.
You don't, Jack, this is all you have still so far. I mean, it's something changed. You don't have anything for schools, right? I mean, you said playground before, but it's not on anymore now.
There was some school.
Yeah, school. Didn't I put it down the bottom?
There were some schools.
They wanted like $40,000.
It's online.
Did I hand you one tonight?
No, not the one, oh, maybe the one you handed me tonight, but not you, that attached spreadsheet you responded to someone else.
Paul.
Oh, maybe they changed it.
They've requested, at least, most current I have is $40,000 for paving and playground.
I don't see it. I don't have it.
That's a DHL of day school.
Because I, all I was asking, just because, when I told that, right, did you get roughly about, not kind of, just for cash things, at least on the spreadsheet, it was 487, right? And we have about 300, so they have to.
So they do, they did $40,000.
Okay, so it's a little bit more. So maybe $500,000 worth of cash stuff they're looking for? We have 300?
So we're good?
I'm good.
Okay.
One other document that I gave you, just, that was from something Julie gave me today, multicolored, there's a blue column in the notes, just looking at our revenues for the first quarter. Part of my, one of my goals for 2013 was to update you on financials occasionally.
Okay, sure.
So she's giving you the 2012 actuals.
Oh, I lost him.
Lost him.
I was going to lean on him for a second. John, I know you don't have a microphone, but you were, you were sent, I believe, the redline versions from council on the zoning articles?
This is for a full year?
Everything okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. For those at home, that was a yes.
Yeah.
We don't have motor vehicle.
Just wanted to be sure. Thanks.
We knew.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've got.
Just forget how efficient you are.
She's unbelievable, isn't she?
She is.
So what we're showing you are the 2000, fiscal year 2012, actual revenue for each of our, these are miscellaneous revenues, are our local receipts. The second column shows you the first quarter for FY12, what we've, what we received back a year ago. Third column shows you what we've estimated for budgetary purposes. And then the fourth column shows you what we've actually received for the first quarter so far. One of the, you know, tricky things with this, some, a lot of this information is it's not, you know, it's not divisible by four. So like motor vehicle excise taxes are, a big chunk of those will come in in February, March timeframe. So I think that's why Julie's showing you the first quarter of last year to the first quarter of this year. We had some, in 2012, I know on motor vehicle, we had some, the way the registry actually processes some of that, they send out the bills, and then the revenue comes directly into the town. And some of the, end of 2011, actually came in in the first quarter of 2012 because of the timing of the bills from the registry. That's why that $94,000 is much higher than 66, all right, this year is 62.
You don't see any problems then, right? Looks good?
I'd like to see some of them higher, but.
It's a little squeaky, but it's not bad.
Yeah, it's not the worst news in the world. So in, I can go to a little few other minor business items, if you want.
Yeah, let's just talk briefly about the town meeting articles. For those at home, Jack and I are going to do a cable show on November.
12th.
November 12th to go through the town warrant. We're not going to voice pro or con on any of the articles. We're just going to try and explain to folks, especially the zoning articles, what they mean, so that there'll be a clearer understanding, hopefully, for people when they come to town meeting. And if you, if the cable stations on the other channels aren't working, you get a chance to tune into this. Hopefully, we can share with you sort of an English version of what some of these articles mean. And that will be, we're taping that on the 12th, so it'll be aired prior to town meeting. So hopefully, we can give folks a better understanding of the articles that are on the warrant. When the warrant is closed, if I can jump ahead just to the town planner, Jack, briefly.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to share with folks at home, something that I've been working on for a while and have talked with all of the land use boards as well as the advisory board on. It's, to me, very clear that we have a critical need in the town for a position called a town planner. Town planners basically do four or five different functions. One, they are clearly an asset to the town, both in terms of DPW, planning board, as they're an assistant to the planning board. They're basically assistants to all the land use boards. Number of towns do this. In fact, towns that I think are really well-structured and well-organized do this. But the primary issue where I think we have a need is frankly around zoning. Myself included in this statement, we have volunteers doing zoning in Norfolk. And they become disjointed. And, you know, we have folks sitting redlining these and changing them and so on. And this is not the way it should work. And so I had thought, I'd been planning on bringing this forward in, in May. And then, because of what I thought was really a sense of urgency, having talked to the land use boards as well as DPW and Jack, and some informal through Jack with the other selectmen, that we might try to get this on the fall warrant. But truth is, I think probably May is the right place to have it. My concern in waiting is that government, you know, has two speeds, slow and lethargic. And the way we have to work in hiring a position like this is we have to post it in the general ledger. It takes 45 days just to get that advertisement out. Then you have to get applicants, you have interviews. So if everything went well, if town meeting approved the position, and we have the funds for it, if everything went well, we couldn't get this person on for nine months. And if we wait till May, if you follow that cycle, we're a year and a half away. And personal bias, and I think also some of the members of the other boards would share that we really, this is a position that's really critically needed. We need this professional help in, in the town in Norfolk. But in further discussions with Jack, we think we found kind of a moderate solution to this. There's no reason why we can't advertise for this position pending town meeting approval, begin the process after the first of the year, solicit candidates, but all conditioned on town meeting approving this in May. So if, if in fact, we were successful in getting approval for this hire, we could have this person on board in the summer. So that kind of made me feel a little bit better. And it also, I think, gives us time to really think through the responsibilities and the job description for, to outline in detail the job description that really fits the needs of this town. And, and to work with the other boards to get their input, so that we have a really cohesive plan, a really cohesive job description, so that when we go out on the market, we know exactly what we're looking for and exactly what the responsibilities will be of that position. And we won't be expediting it unnecessarily. So, and I think it helps for the community. I'm sharing it tonight, because we're going to talk a lot about it as we go through the next few months, as to what this position really will be and what the responsibilities will be. So I just wanted to, to share that with folks, that it's on the horizon. We will be bringing it forward in the May, spring meeting, but we're going to do some work to begin the process before that, so that we can hopefully get, be in a position, and hopefully with town support, to move forward with this. It really is a critical, critical position to the town. Jack, you want to throw two cents in? I know Bob McGee and others have just been asking for this for some time.
No, I just, I strongly agree with it. You know, especially, I don't want to sound like I'm overly optimistic, but as we start to return to a better economy, I want, you know, it's, it's critical for us to get, be prepared for that. You know, we don't want to miss the next development cycle. And we want to be prepared for that as best we can, so.
And this individual would, would, I mean, just to kind of quickly recap some of the responsibilities, we would envision this person becoming our zoning enforcement officer. We would envision this individual really reviewing all of our bylaws, once he or she has a good understanding of the community and what our goals and objectives are, and what our master plan is, and trying to sync some of these bylaws together. With no ill intent of any people that are participating in this process, it's just that we're not professionals. A lot of our zoning tends to be reactive zoning, which is normal for towns, you know? I mean, my favorite example of that is the tree cutting bylaw.
Which one?
The one for clear cutting. You know, and we just, we need, we're, we've grown to the point where we need professional help in this regard. So, it's a personal opinion, I think, shared by many. So, we will pursue it.
Would you have the town planner to look at the master plan, since we already have a master plan? Or no, just endorse that and just take that and?
Well, two things, he could clearly work with the master plan. I mean, we have a master plan in place, and it's been updated. And the master plan is really the privilege of the planning board. So that's not what I'm suggesting, but working from the master plan, so he has an understanding of what the potential is for the town, you know, that helps, I think, frame some of the zoning considerations as to how we want our town to grow. We've worked the last four months on a downtown business district master plan, you know, on the B1 district. What's the appropriate zoning to make that all work and come together? And have we linked all these articles together to be sure that we don't have contradictions and things of that nature? And we've made good faith efforts. I think we've got some great recommendations coming forward to this fall meeting.
I think the, the person will do a lot of facilitating for things like the master plan, you know? Like, I mean, I don't set selectmen's policy, you know, obviously you guys do, but I help facilitate, I help point out where I think there are weaknesses. I hear. I, I help point out where I think there are weaknesses. I hear things that you suggest, and I try and take them and, and bring them, bring some back, some information for you to, um, to consider. Uh, I think the planner would do the same thing, working with, whether it's the planning board, the zoning bylaw study committee, um, just kind of being that one person in the middle of all that to, uh, put it all together.
Our affordable housing plan, which we submitted seven years ago, I think it's seven years now.
Probably was that, yeah.
Hasn't been updated.
Right.
And we need to update that. Uh, this is something that the planner would do. And zoning enforcement, um, he would be, at least my vision anyway, would be that he would be the zoning enforcement officer, and we've, we've checked with appropriate council and so on in terms of what responsibilities we can and we cannot align, and that, that is doable. Watertown just did that. So, um, anyway, we will be pursuing this, talking a lot more about it, um, working with the planning board, the, uh, ZBA, and, and all of the permitting boards, uh, land use boards, to see if we can't come up with the appropriate job description for all of this and the responsibilities, so. Anyway, I wanted to update folks on that. 82 Main Street's really kind of a, a quick hit.
Sure.
Yeah. The, uh, the municipal housing trust is, um, working on a project on 82 Main Street, which is down next to St. Jude's. In fact, it, the framing started today. So it's, uh, moving right along. In fact, all the homes are really starting to get going now, so, um, we've, we're doing well. But the agreement that is in place, because some of these funds came from CPC, traditionally CPC would have oversight on, on these expenditures, uh, when they give money to organizations like the Grange or other places. They would provide appropriately, I might add, you know, some oversight on, on, to ensure that these funds are expended in the right way. Not that they wouldn't be, but, you know, it's, it's due process and, and the correct thing to do. This particular situation is, is unique and a little different than what CPC is, is traditionally done, because it involves a third party, because the town actually owns, the municipal housing trust, which is a town board, actually owns the land. So town council had to develop a separate agreement, uh, that actually, I won't say intentionally, because it wasn't intentional, but because of the way the, the land is structured and owned, the agreement acts, acts to be with the board of selectmen. And the agreement does call for the board to approve the operating budget for that project. Uh, the operating budget for that project is $130,000. So in order to comply with that agreement, uh, we need to take a, a formal vote of approval. That's really the only component in the contract that we have yet to complete, so. I don't know what more I can add. It is under construction. We've complied with all of the, uh, appropriate bidding requirements associated with the law.
Yes, we have.
It's been a labor of love, but we have complied with every single component.
I'm not sure if anybody really loves that, but yes.
Yeah, nobody loves it. Um, it's being constructed by a nonprofit organization. There's a lot of volunteer help going into the construction of the home. And it's, it's gonna be a very nice project. It's, it's working out financially quite advantageously as a result. It's, it's, in some respects, very similar to a Habitat for Humanity project.
I, because I just throw out a, a small plug. Random Smile is the, uh, organization from Franklin, um, and they have a lot of ties to Norfolk. I know people from Norfolk volunteer, uh, on the board for Random Smile, but, um, they're also doing some more, more and more work, um, in all the local communities, and, uh, great organization. I've had the opportunity to go to some of their, uh, fundraising events in the past, and, uh, they do a tremendous amount of work, you know, handicap ramps for people. They've done a couple houses like this. Um, they do a lot of renovations for people who need some help. So they are a great organization, and it's, it's great that the town's able to partner with them.
Yeah. The gentleman that, that is one of the directors of Random Smiles is a contractor, and, um, he has been incredible, uh, in, um, I, I will defer his name just for one more meeting.
Yeah.
When we get everything signed, but he, he's just been incredible in involunteering his time and his effort and, and organizing and helping getting this project done. It's significantly lowering the costs, uh, to allow this to be really a financially viable project for the town. A very nice family is going in there. They're excited. They're actually, even though it's not part of the requirement, uh, the, the family that's going in there is actually working on the home, too.
Oh, good.
So, uh, they're gonna be putting their time and effort into helping as well, so. As I said, in many respects, it's not a Habitat for Humanity project. I guess it's a Habitat for Norfolk project.
Random Smile.
A lot of, a lot of Norfolk, um, folks are volunteering their time and materials and effort to help make this happen, so. It really is a community effort, so, and, and when we get it done and completed, we wanna be sure that there's the appropriate recognition for these folks. A lot of people have helped. It's taken us a lot longer than we hoped. We're learning. Government process is very cumbersome at times, and, uh,
Yeah, the state, the state hasn't helped us on.
In many times contradictory. They contradict each other. One department and another department have completely opposite views on how things have to be done.
Lot of fun.
Yeah, but we got through it, so. Uh, so I would entertain a motion to approve an operating budget of $130,000 for 82 Main Street.
I move that we approve our $130,000.
Did I say 180?
No, 130. I'm only motioning $130,000 operating budget for 82 Main Street.
I will second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There's a gentleman in the audience. I, I have a note. Mr. Cannon? Do I have that right? Did you wanna come before the board for any particular reason?
No, no, not today.
Okay. All right, well, glad to have you here. I, I wanted to give you the opportunity if you did. Okay.
Okay, go ahead, unless I'm, you ready for me again?
I guess.
Sure.
Are you gonna say something, Marion?
No.
You're looking for help, Jack? Or we can do a proof of minutes?
No, I, I, sorry, my bad.
You could tell that we pushed all of our agenda items off until the following meeting.
No, we had a, uh, good day, though, other, other than, uh, uh, my regionalization fun, uh, with the town administrators. I also was, uh, able to participate on a selection panel, I guess you would call it.
Oh, yeah.
With, uh, for a new firefighter. So we, and I, we, I very much so appreciate the assistance of Fire Chief Bob Spur from Avon and, uh, Fire Chief Neil Boldrighini from Mansfield. Three of us interviewed, uh, um, the finalists for the, the firefighter's job, and very happy to say we selected Kevin Brady, who is a call firefighter from Norfolk. We had a couple of call firefighters, and then.
Great choice.
And then some outsiders, uh, interested as well, but, uh, uh, the chiefs, uh, actually, even without my, uh, participation, selected Kevin. And, uh, and I just confirmed that, and it was a great process, um, and we actually, I think we've got another gentleman, who I, I'm hoping will, we can work our way, work our way onto the call fire department. Um, he lives in, on Miller Street in Franklin. He's a kid. Honest to God, he's a, you know, I'm getting old.
You are.
But he's, uh, he's a paramedic, uh, working ambulance, uh, doesn't have any fire experience, so we'd love to get him on the, you know, get his, uh, get his medical expertise. But anyway, I digress. Kevin's on board, and, uh, he will start, um, as a full-time firefighter as soon as we can get all the paperwork done, and, uh, very impressive, uh, package he put together and, uh, and interview, and, uh, I know all the other, uh, he had a lot of support from the department, so that, that was a win-win situation, so.
He's a great hire.
He is a great hire.
He's a great hire. Great choice.
Thank you.
Did we lose him so much, you said, because he was doing what, dispatch, you know, do we, we're at the fill-in now?
He's been, he's been doing some dispatch, uh, he's been on the call fire department, um, you know, and the, and the other fire chiefs, uh, love the fact that he's been doing dispatch for us, too, because that's, they say, you know, they've always had the most productive firefighters, uh, because it's a, it's a great, uh, education for them to, to kind of hear the whole chain of command, uh, process from the dispatcher's point of view. So, yeah, we do lose him there.
So, one, one hand, but nothing to do.
This is a good hire.
No, it sounds good.
It's a really good.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
It's a really good hire.
Uh, nice young man, so.
That he is. They're all good, good, great guys, but it's, it's just a good hire, yeah.
And I would say that the other candidates were all very impressive, too, so. We were, had the, had the, uh, pleasure of making, having a difficult selection, difficult selection process, so. So that is, uh, I think the majority of things that I was hoping to cover tonight, and, uh, well, that is all.
Scott, did you have anything else?
No, just wanted, do you wanna do the minutes, right? I wanna make a motion.
Do you have any, uh, new business or old business or updates or anything?
No. Uh, well, yeah, on, um, road safety, actually, because Bob McGee scheduled a drive, we're gonna do a drive, drive around with the new DPW superintendent from Rentham on, I think it's the 30th of this month, Tuesday. So hopefully get him on board in.
You don't wanna do it on Halloween?
I think it's the 30th. It's on the day.
Is that gonna be looking at the truck route?
Yeah, truck route, yeah. So, yeah, so that's, that's good.
So progress.
Yeah, progress, yeah. Slow, but progress. I know that people are concerned, so. We're trying every day, but it's only so much you can do.
Maybe just two quick updates, uh, one on the, um, Gumps Playground project. Uh, we can probably both pitch in a little bit on that, but, um, we do have a plan in place now. I believe there's a chance that we might actually be able to get some grading and some initial work done on the parking lot before the winter sets in. At least that's the last I heard, but I think you've had one conversation more recently than mine. Is that?
Yeah, I think there's just an administrative process they need to, uh, go to satisfy with the zoning board of appeals, um, just to make sure they have, uh, a special permit that they need. Should not be a problem, but.
That's a meeting on the 30th, because I gotta notice because I'm in the butter. Yeah, the parking, keep it gravel, right? That's, that's the 30th.
Last I heard, they wanted it paved now. Is that right?
I did not hear that, but.
Okay.
Isn't it scheduled for the planning board to come in front of, I got the letter, it's the 30th.
Yeah, go on the planning board.
They are, yeah.
But they wanna pave it now, or?
Well, that, that's not.
I saw the plan. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't look at.
Original plan is gravel. Uh, it's, it's been recommended by, I think, actually Bob McGee, that he would like to see it hardtopped. The maintenance of gravel and the plowing and things of that nature, he thinks. You know, he's got far more expertise than we have, and, and it's within the funding to do it that way.
Okay.
So, um, I know that was one current discussion, but we're, we're hopeful that we can at least begin some of the grading and some of the, the work before the winter sets in, so that it'll make it that much easier and quicker to get it done in the spring.
No, the playground will be in the spring.
Playground will be in the spring, right, as will the gardens, but they, they should be usable for the summer season, for the growing season.
Playground, I know you've seen it.
That's our hope.
Playground looks, uh, like it'll be great.
Uh, it's a mini Norfolk. Ann, Ann Proto has done a beautiful job in designing that.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
And Scott, you, you're on the recreation board. We thank you as well.
We saw the pictures on Monday. No, she's, it's Ann. She does it all. She's, the playground's her strong point there. It looks nice. People are gonna, I mean, people, I mean, kids base, I go by today, it still had 10 cars in it, so it's, it's gonna be packed. I can't imagine what the new place is gonna be like.
And I also noticed they colored in the barometer.
That was done, we asked, we thought, I thought that was done by, no, that was done by, that was done by.
Somebody else?
Somebody else. Unasked for.
And we did it, huh?
Yes. And I thought it was funny, because I, you know, we, we went to our meeting, we asked about that, said, you know, it's nice you finally colored it in, because it's been at 5,000 forever, right? He's like, no, that was, I don't wanna say it was vandalism, because it was colored nicely. We're thinking about actions, the rec board wanted to see.
We don't know that's viewed as, whether that's viewed as a positive or a negative.
Exactly. I'm not sure. After the vote, that wasn't, that, that was not done by the recreation commission.
The, uh, the Gumps, the homes are really coming along. The, uh, Gumps house, which I know probably is so visible to everybody, I'm sure everybody has seen it, but, um, we, we've tried to replicate the home that was there. I think it looks really nice, really good. Um, it's a nice three-bedroom cape. Uh, they're plastering the walls today as we speak. The other home is all framed now, um, and roofed, um, so I think people can get a good feel for what that is. It's a four-bedroom colonial, very nice-looking home. And the one on Mira Lake is under construction as well, so, and the framing is going on at 82 Main Street, so.
So there are four houses under construction.
Currently under construction. Uh, and the municipal housing trust is gonna be holding an open house on December 15th and 16th to go through these homes. For anyone that would have interest before we pass papers on them, which is probably scheduled for January. We do have lottery winners, occupants for all the homes. And, uh, they're all very anxious. We did get Norfolk preference, uh, for, I think, two, if, no, three. We got Norfolk preference for three, I believe, of the seven properties that are going up. Norfolk preference is defined as someone that lives in Norfolk, family member of Norfolk, or has ties to King Philip, or has children in King Philip. So it could be a resident of Rentham or Plainville whose children are in King Philip. So we were very excited about that, so, um, but they're very nice-looking homes.
They are. I have not been inside, but, uh.
That's all, that's great. Especially the one with the farmer's porch. I'm jealous. I like farmer's porch. That four-bedroom colonial there on Boardman is, is, yeah, farmer's porch looks nice.
Looks great. So I didn't have any other items. Um, Jack?
Nope.
Scott?
Nope.
Minutes.
Minutes, yes. So, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the October 9th regular and executive session minutes.
I will second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Okay.
No. I got it wrapped up in the second. I haven't gotten to do that in a while.
Yeah, I'll be out there.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Marion, again, thank you. You're so prompt at getting those up on the webpage for us.
Marion, did I miss anything?
Not that I know of.
Well, we knew it would be a brief meeting. Actually, it was a little longer. I think you probably had the under on this one.
Marion did point out to me that November 12th is.
Mr. Cannon, did you wanna visit about anything on that? Off, off, once we're off the meeting? I'm a member of the municipal housing trust. If you had any questions on that.
I got a lot of issues.
Oh, hang around for a sec. Sure.
Yeah.
November 12th is a holiday, so we may just need to reschedule that, uh. It's Veterans Day.
Did we resolve that? Did everybody agree?
No, I'm thinking about November 12th for our taping.
Your taping.
Oh, we're doing it the 12th?
Yeah, but it's a holiday. It's, it's Veterans Day, because Veterans Day is on a Monday, so we'll just have to pick a new date.
Pick another day. Okay, well, we don't wanna do it too late, because we wanna.
There's no people gonna be sitting there with the TV watching it, so.
Yeah, you wanna let them know now.
They should check nctv.org and see what the real date is.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
Yeah, fine.
We need to do it before the 29th, though.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
Be helpful.
I figure people on Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I, I hope, I hope that, uh.
It's like a football, halftime during a football game, they can football that.
I think it would be good practice. I hope that, that, you know, that, um, as Mr. Gary will be chair next year, and then subsequently, Mr. Bugby and so on. I think it's a good thing to, when you have these meetings.
Sure.
For, to do a show, um, and go through the warrant articles and help people understand it, especially zoning.
Yeah, those are hard.
I mean, they're worded in a way that only by lawyers, only to be interpreted by lawyers, and hopefully we can frame it in English.
All right.
Any other business? Marion, we good?
We're good. Just motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I, I moved that we joined the meeting.
I get to second again. All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for joining us. Um, our next meeting, which will be considerably longer, will be, when is it? November?
November 5th.
November 5th. Thank you, Marion. November 5th. That's a Monday.
A Monday.
Uh, Tuesday's election day.
Tuesday's election.
So we did, we were doing it on Monday, November 5th. Right. Thank you for joining us.
The count is getting tougher.
I know about your.